And she, would you please raise your hand, Alejandra? Okay, and please ask her for a listening device if you would like interpretation services. Antes de llamar a la junta, ahora me gustaría notar que contamos con servicios de interpretación para esta junta, y la señora Villagranas está sentada atrás. I'd like to call this meeting to order for the City Council meeting of February 7th, 2023. Madam Clerk, could you please make an announcement about accessing the meeting and call the roll?
In order to participate in the City Council meeting virtually, please register to speak using the link on the agenda under public comment or call 1-669-900-9123 and use webinar ID number 8214665, excuse me, 46594067. To raise your hand to speak on a particular agenda item, please use the raise hand button in the Zoom meeting portal. If you're using a telephone, please raise your, please press star nine on your telephone keypad to raise your hand to speak. Press star six to unmute your phone. When is your time to speak? The microphone will be unmuted for the time allotted by the mayor and will be muted upon completion of your comments. Councilmember Aguilar Hernandez, Councilmember Cordero.
Here.
Councilmember Escobedo.
Here.
Councilmember Soto.
Here.
Madam Mayor Patino.
Here. Before I start the agenda, I wanted to make an announcement. As you well know, this is not news. Last month, we had a record rainfall, which was really overwhelming, and the design of the capacity of our system, channels, and basins, we endured the flooding and damages estimated in the millions of dollars, but we avoided major problems here. And I just wanted you to know that the employees in the city of Santa Maria did such a fantastic job. And with Public Works, we ensured that the sand piles were placed weeks in advance at live locations, Carmen Lane, Sway Crossing, Northwestern, San Isidro west of Miller Street, and the Public Works yard. The sand was supplied from screen material stockpiles mined from the river at Santa Maria Regional Landfill. And prior to the storm, our Public Works and Utilities designated staff to different locations throughout the city to monitor the water basins, channels, and prior, and prone areas for flooding. City crews monitor the system day and night during the event. And I don't know if people realize, they go out and they clean these storm drains out so the water is supposed, is doing what it's supposed to do and flows out. Our employees remove trash and debris and leaves from the drainage inlets through the city to allow the runoff into storm drain and basin systems. And staff continued to remove debris during the event. Staff removed locks and open gates blocking inlets, outlets of large storm drain pipes. Our Recreation and Parks Department with the Rangers and the Police Department made efforts to inform people encamped in the riverbed of the dangers expected with the river flows. Multiple warning and information messages in Spanish and English transmitted to city residents before, during, and after the storms. This was headed up by our city manager's office in consultation with other departments, including the Police Department. We provided maps of known areas of localized street flooding, and the Community Development Department also helped with the messaging. Recreation and Parks primed its arborist contractor to ensure readiness to respond during and after the storms to remove tree debris. Utilities Department ensured all vehicles at the wastewater treatment plant were fully fueled to be prepared for the emergency. Public Works ensured the Mussel Wall was placed on a trailer to respond to an emergency, and the wall was placed at two locations, Marion Street at Jones Street and Farrell Street at Jones. Two emergency trailers with equipment signs, barricades, and cones were ready before the storm to perform closures as needed. Utilities Department prestaged pumps for basin that may have needed additional drainage capacity. They operated pumps during and after the event to provide the storage of additional rainfall. If any of you went up to North Blosser and saw the basin up there, it was overflowing and was going across the road. And so we went out there and got that pumped out, so it went down to the river. The water supply, the Utilities Department maintained surplus water levels in drinking water reservoirs in case of long-term power loss. Maintained and fully fueled backup generators at well and reservoir sites. During the storm, the crews from Public Works, Utilities, and Recreation and Parks worked at all hours monitoring conditions. We had 16 road closures, and when the drainage system became pressurized with runoff, we experienced a number of popped manhole covers. Recreation and Parks opened a shelter at Menami Center and Atkinson Center for anyone in need. The Emergency Operations Center opened on January 9th. Public Works Director Brett Folgony and Utilities Director Shad Springer headed the EOC along with Emergency Services Specialist Roy Dugger and Acting Deputy Fire Chief Jim Clayton from the Fire Department. And the twice daily structured meetings, so our constant, our department heads along with the city manager were in constant meetings. Post-storm, all of our staff continues to work on behalf of the community, participating in the meetings, and the County Office of Emergency Services, FEMA, and other agencies. And we're seeking to help any residents that need to recover. But I wanted to take time to recognize these efforts by our employees because everything worked like it was supposed to work, and so none of us were, you know, uncomfortable or were put out by this. So I just think it's really important to notice. I was talking to Lori Tamura, and you have all these projects going up, so you have cement all over the place. Well, that water has to go someplace, and it worked. And so some of you can remember when the streets downtown used to flood, but everything worked like it should, and now we're gonna, I was talking to our city manager, we're gonna ask our congressman that we need, we need a retention basin on the east side of the freeway because then we wouldn't have the flooding, some of the flooding that's going on now. But anyway, I just wanted the city people in the city of Santa Maria to know what was going on and how well everything operated. Thank you.
First on the agenda this evening is the public comment period. Madam Clerk, could you please read the criteria for the public comment portion of the agenda?
This time is reserved to accept comments from the public on consent agenda items, closed session items, or matters not otherwise scheduled on the printed agenda this evening. Unless otherwise scheduled, excuse me, otherwise directed by the mayor, speakers will have three minutes to comment. Direction to staff may be given, however, state law does not allow action to be taken on matters not on the printed agenda. Once public comment period commences, no other speakers will be allowed to submit a request to speak form. Madam Mayor, council members, staff received one written correspondence from Scott Fina requesting council adopt a development impact fee deferral program ordinance for affordable housing. The correspondence was forwarded to council members and hard copies were provided at the dais. And we have one request to speak in the building, and I see no requests to speak in Zoom at this time.
Thank you very much, Madam Clerk. Gary Hall. And, and so we have the timer for three minutes. Thank you.
Good evening, Madam Mayor, council members, staff. My name is Gary Hall. I'm a resident of Rancho Buena Vista Mobile Estates at 2135 North Railroad Avenue here in Santa Maria. I represent the North Santa Barbara County Mobile Homeowners Team, or MNSB. The mobile home residents are anxious to reconvene the stakeholder meetings. We felt the September 22nd and November 29th meetings were beneficial and productive. We were invited to produce and submit our view of the critical unresolved issues. On January 9th, an overdue email was sent to the city's representatives from our attorney, Bruce Stanton. It was, included was a document titled Mobile Home Model Lease Program: Homeowner's Summary of Issues and Proposed Solutions. The document states our overall goal is to provide protection to all Santa Maria mobile home residents presently living in an unregulated rental market where the current model lease program has been ineffective in protecting homeowner equity and maintaining affordable mobile home housing. The document provides our view of four broad issues that need to be addressed. We have provided specific goal to be achieved for each issue and proposed solutions for meeting those goals. We remain extremely interested in receiving feedback to that document prior to the next stakeholder meeting, which has been rescheduled to February 22nd. We believe our work so far has met the intent of the June 7th, 2022 motion, yes, eight months ago already, which reads in part, "To examine enhancing the model lease agreement to see if there was room for improvement and to look at alternatives." We believe we're doing our part. There must be some way to accelerate the progress. Let's find it. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Hall. Danny Almanza.
Hello. My name is Danny Almanza. I'm a king to represent. Everybody don't have nothing. You know, I don't have nothing, but I'm the richest man in the world. I have more than any of you guys have in this, in this room. If you don't believe me, I cannot tell no lies because I've been through death and back. And Ms. Mayor, why are you taking from all little people that don't have, you know, you're taking the aluminum can dispensaries, now they gotta go steal. Why are you taking all that from them? Park benches, they can't sit, they can't barbecue. Cops go and harass them while they're in the parks. Isn't it supposed to be public parks? Why do cops have to go harass people? You know what it is? Pick up a sword. He's teaching me this stuff. Pick up a sword, die by a sword. You know what that means? You know what that means? You should tell your officers that. If they don't confess before they die, they go straight to hell. So tell them that. And pay more attention to the city because this city is named after a virgin, okay? I didn't know that until recently. I didn't even know the church was named that. And everybody's spinning on this city like it's nothing, and they shouldn't. You guys sitting up there like you're kings and queens. He's the king. Look at what happened in Syria and Turkey. That's gonna happen here soon. If you don't wake up, because I'm here to represent him, and I cannot tell no lies because he is in my presence. Everything that comes out of my mouth is truth. So open up your eyes before something happens like in Syria and Turkey. He don't like people that don't obey his laws. Things happen for reasons. It's not natural. They happen for reasons. Just like that COVID population control. He told me so. Government did it to get rid of the elderly and the sick. So stop wearing the mask. Do you believe you don't need the masks? Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Almanza. Before we move on, Mr. Silwell, did you wish to make any comments?
No, just thank you for acknowledging the employees who worked on the storm safety.
Thank you. Okay. Okay, Ms. Tipton?
Yes.
Okay, you wanted to speak at public comment?
Yes, ma'am.
Okay, that's fine. Yes.
Good evening. Can I move this?
Yes, please.
Okay. Good evening, mayor and council members. My name is Sabrina Tipton, and I'm a public information officer with the Small U.S. Business Administration Office of Disaster Recovery and Resilience. I'm coordinating SBA support for those affected by the storms that occurred on December 27th and are continuing. With this county being declared Santa Barbara, the SBA support extends to homeowners and renters. So that's what changes that when we show up, as well as we partner with FEMA. So what I'd like you to know is that the SBA offers low-interest disaster loans to businesses of all sizes, most private nonprofit organizations, including places of worship, as well as homeowners and renters that may not be insured or may be underinsured as a result of the disaster. Small businesses can borrow up to $2 million to repair and replace damaged property, as well as any capital needs that might have been caused because of the disaster. Homeowners may borrow up to $200,000 to repair or replace their primary residence. And then we have homeowners and renters that may borrow up to $40,000 to replace personal property, which could be furniture, clothing, as well as a vehicle. Because we are partnering with FEMA, the very first step that any disaster survivor needs to make is they need to register with FEMA. That's how that works, even if they're a business. So they register with FEMA at disasterassistance.gov. For Spanish, it's disasterassistance.gov/ES, and you receive a FEMA number that is significant for this disaster. Then step two is you can also come over to the SBA side, and you can fill out a federal low-interest loan for your business, for your home, or as a renter. There is no commitment as far as paying a fee to fill that out, nor a commitment to say yes or no at that point. You have two to three weeks. Take it home, look at it. We also want to say that our center is right down the street. We also, Hancock College, Building O. We also have a disaster relief center up in San Luis Obispo and one in Santa Barbara. People can go to any county disaster relief center, okay, because it's a California declaration. And within those, we have all sorts of resources, your own nonprofits, your own organizations. We have folks that do translation. We really want to get people down to the centers and get that traffic going because right in there, there's a lot of resources, okay? And I can't speak to all of it, but we have USDA, FSA, they have rural grants, there's agricultural, et cetera. And I think that's all really important for Santa Barbara County. It kind of goes across the whole activities that go on with your county. So I would just like to let you know that you can also call the customer service numbers, The FEMA one is 1-800-621-3362. And if you have any questions, I can answer anything. It's very close to what you were speaking about, Mayor, so.
Forget the red light.
Yes, ma'am. But I am done, I am done talking. But I liked hearing what you said about what was down because I could see that difference coming here.
Yeah. And I think it's important for the people in Santa Maria to know what's been done so that we know.
Yes.
How else are you doing outreach?
Okay, I arrived here three weeks ago, and so what we do with SBA, we go straight into the commerce. We go into your economic, and then we start emailing all of you. And then we look at when your city council meetings are so we can come present. And then my very first week, I was out at Guadalupe. I spoke with the city council, immediately went back up because at the time, just San Luis Obispo was open, and had the USDA brief me on their rural grants and whatnot, and then came back and provided that information. I'm working with Garrett. I'm also working with David from your Santa Maria Chamber of Commerce.
Okay.
Okay, and we've given the translations in Hispanic and Spanish for the Hispanic community. I can do any outreach that you would like. If there's any other areas, I will also let you know that your county supervisor, Olson Lee, one of his, you know, directors within his office, she took me around Orchid, and we went door to door to the homeowners there, provided the information for the homeowners and the renters that were there. So I've done that within your area. And then went to the Orchid Bakery and also spoke with them, as well as, you know, we do TV interviews, radio interviews, whatever we can do. And then as far as your agricultural aspect, we give out the USDA and the FSA press release, and that information is available. We can't speak to the programs, but because we're partnered, and this is a presidential declaration, we can supply that information, and we do.
Then how are you, how do you connect with the city? Are we already connected with them? Okay.
Yeah, and I'm, yeah, and I did send an email a couple weeks ago. I know that it can get bogged up, but that's why we try to hit all the city council meetings. That's why I'm here now. And I'm, I am going to always be here for you, even if we get sent elsewhere, which will be sometime down the road. I'm gonna be here for a while.
Thank you.
So I'm here for you, Mayor, if you need to get hold of me or any council members or anybody else.
Any questions from the council?
And I did give you a mitigation flyer, as well as the fact sheet, okay, just to kind of give the ideas. And it's what you spoke to as to what you were even speaking about with your city, the hail, the earthquake, the wind, flood, wildfire, okay? Just to give you some examples of that. And thank you very much for your time, and I hope people that are listening through Zoom and here.
So if anyone's listening tonight after all that?
Yes.
You want to repeat the phone numbers so they can?
Yes, I do. I would, absolutely. So first off, please go to disasterassistance.gov, and then for Spanish speakers, disasterassistance.gov/ES. The SBA customer service number is 1-800-659-2955. The FEMA customer number is 1-800-621-3362. And we encourage folks to please go to the center. It's right down the street at Hancock. Or if you work in San Luis Obispo, please go to that one. And then there's also one down at Direct Relief in Calida.
Thank you very much for being here.
Yes, thank you.
Mr. Escobedo?
Thank you, Mayor, and thank you for, thank you for coming here.
Yes.
It's good to have a face. And question about the phone calls. So are they also offer service in Spanish when somebody call?
Yes, there is. And then also, I want to, I want to speak to your, to the SBDC that's here. They cover Santa Barbara, Ventura, LA counties. That's what David is part of from your Hispanic chamber here. We also, they have links to actual numbers and websites always for your Spanish community. Would you like me to send you that, Mr. Escobedo?
Yes.
Send you that information? Yes, sir, I will do that. Would you like me to also CC the mayor and your fellow council members?
Certainly, yes.
Yes, sir. Yes, ma'am, I'll do that as well.
Do you have the num, is it the same number or a different number for Spanish? It's like?
It's the same number, and then there'll be an indicator that speaks Spanish to press a certain number. Is that okay?
Yeah.
All right. But I'll still send you some more information if you want to push it out. And then I'm gonna be sending all of you an email afterwards to invite you to something tomorrow right down the street, but I'll provide the details in the email if any of you can make it.
Thank you very much.
Thank you very much. All right.
I have Brett Garrett on Zoom for public comment.
Good evening. My name is Brett Garrett. I'm a member of People for Public Banking Central Coast, and we're advocating for a Central Coast Public Bank. This will be a government-owned bank to meet the needs of the counties and cities in the Central Coast. With a public bank, our city's money will work for us, creating benefits for Central Coast residents instead of profits for Wall Street shareholders. This is not a new idea. The state of North Dakota has had its own public bank for over 100 years. It does not compete with credit unions or community banks. It actually cooperates with small financial institutions to help them thrive, creating more loans to benefit the community. Our public bank will do the same for the Central Coast region. Banks leverage funds and create money in the sense that every dollar of capitalization provides $10 worth of loans. It's a money multiplier effect. Our public bank will be able to multiply our tax dollars, creating money by issuing loans to benefit our region. Our public bank will bring democracy and transparency to banking, helping to fund housing projects, critical facilities, clean energy projects, and supporting equity while avoiding investments in fossil fuels. Actually, while avoiding, hopefully avoiding investments in fossil fuels. Our public bank will represent the values of our region. Three counties and nine cities are already engaged in the formation of this bank for the Central Coast, and that includes Santa Barbara County. These counties and cities are just about to finalize an RFP, Request for Proposals, in order to produce a viability study, which is an initial step toward creating the Central Coast Public Bank. And this is not a partisan issue, but I do want you to know that the, last week, the Democratic Party of Santa Barbara County passed a resolution urging the cities in our county to get involved in creating this proposed public bank. So that's what I'm asking you to do, to get in, for the city of Santa Maria to get involved in this effort. The person to contact is at Santa Cruz County. His name is Peter Detlitz, and he's the principal administrative analyst. He has written a draft of the RFP, and at this time, he's seeking input from the participating agencies to finalize the RFP. So this is a great time for the city of Santa Maria to become one of the participating agencies. Again, the person to contact is Peter Detlitz, D-E-T-L-E, F as in Frank, S as in Sam, and he's at the county of Santa Cruz. I thank you very much for your attention.
Thank you, Mr. Garrett. So this concludes the public comment portion of the agenda. Moving on to the consent calendar, Madam Clerk, could you please read item number three?
Routine items are presented for city council approval without discussion as a single agenda item in order to expedite the meeting. The consent calendar is approved by roll call vote with one motion. These items are discussed only on the request of council members. Members of the public may speak on consent calendar items during public comment periods.
Does anyone have items they wish to pull for discussion? Saying none? Can I get a motion?
I move that we approve the consent calendar.
Well, second.
I have a motion and a second to approve this consent calendar. Any further discussion? Hearing none, Madam Clerk, can you please call the roll?
Councilmember Aguilar Hernandez?
Hi.
Councilmember Escobedo?
Hi.
Councilmember Cordero?
Hi.
Councilmember Soto?
Hi.
Madam Mayor Patino?
Aye. Next, we have a presentation. Madam Clerk, could you please read the title?
The city council will receive a presentation from the Community Programs Division to learn about the recent projects and programs funded by various federal and state grant funds like Community Development Block Grants, Home Investment Partnership, and Permanent Local Housing Allocation.
Good evening, Ms. Rojo.
Hi, good evening. We come before you tonight to provide information about projects and programs the Community Programs Division has been a part of, thanks to our federal and state grant funds like Community Development Block Grants, Home Investment Partnership, and Permanent Local Housing Allocation. Now, this is slightly different. Normally, we come to you to tell you or ask you if you're okay with what we're proposing and how to use the funds for the year, but this time, we're coming to you to show you all the great things that we've been able to do with this funding. But before I start, I would like to introduce our staff. Joining me is Alicia Vela, our Grant Specialist Two, and Adriana Delgado. She is our Housing and Community Services Technician. And so the three of us make up the Community Programs Division.
I can remember there was just you.
Right? We're growing. We have a lot going on.
This is what you call a bureaucracy, right?
Okay. This is gonna be fun. So for the past 48 years, since 1975, the Community Development Block Grants Program, or CDBG, has provided the city of Santa Maria with an important source of funding to address a variety of needs, primarily for low-to-moderate-income residents and areas. This is more than 60% of our city's population. This includes assisting those experiencing homelessness, at-risk youth, seniors, individuals with special needs, public improvements, and affordable housing. We receive an average of about $1.5 million a year. Approximately 15 to 20 nonprofits and city agencies are assisted annually with CDBG dollars, and CDBG is administered federally by the U.S. Department of Housing and Urban Development, also known as HUD. To put things in perspective, here's a look at HUD's income limits as to what constitutes someone in our area being low to moderate income. So as you can tell, a family of four making under $111,000 a year is still considered low to moderate income. So that just goes to show why over 60% of our city's population is eligible to receive CDBG or home funding. So I'm gonna go through a few of our projects that we've been able to fund with CDBG dollars. Here you can see Machado Plaza, which was Chapel Plaza. We recently renamed it Machado Plaza. And you can see the before picture, which was basically the rehab, this project was the rehabilitation of a 39,000 square foot underutilized parking lot located along the 200 block of West Chapel Street. And this area is considered low to moderate income. The area has now an ADA-accessible parking lot and recreational event venue. It also has upgraded lighting, a boom gate for controlled access, low landscaping and turf, a small stage for entertainment, and outdoor concrete, and outdoor concrete games for recreational activities. Street lighting and sidewalk improvements have also been improved for safety and accessibility, and this is expected to open in the spring. This next, this next project is the Good Samaritan Kitchen and Overflow Area. a small stage for entertainment, and outdoor concrete, and outdoor concrete games for recreational activities. Street lighting and sidewalk improvements have also been improved for safety and accessibility, and this is expected to open in the spring. This next, this next project is the Good Samaritan Kitchen and Overflow Area. Good Samaritan Shelter provides emergency transitional and supportive services to those in need in the Santa Maria Valley, along with meals for all clients and intensive case management. With CDBG dollars, the flooring in the kitchen, dining hall, and in the restrooms was replaced. And in addition, Good Sam also replaced the fixtures in the restrooms and painted the inside of the restrooms. And hundreds of individuals staying at the shelter have been able to benefit from these improvements. And here we have two different projects. Both are city projects, the ADA Sidewalk Improvement Project and the Wharf Hydrant Project. These projects upgraded existing pedestrian facilities and fire hydrants in low-to-moderate income areas throughout the city. These are areas that have either had a missing or damaged sidewalk, needed ADA curb ramps, curb and gutters, or needed tree removals and replacements, basically in an area that does, that did not meet the current standards for accessibility and/or safety. And then the Wharf Hydrant Replacement Project replaced existing wharf hydrants and installed 10 new fire hydrants in these low-to-moderate income areas. We also have two minor home repair programs that we fund with our CDBG dollars. Community Action Partnership of San Luis Obispo County, also known as CAPSLO, and COMUNIFY, both operate a minor home repair program on behalf of the city of Santa Maria. The two programs differ as far as their scope of work that is offered to the client, and therefore, it is not a duplication of services. On the contrary, there is a great need in the community to obtain assistance for minor home repair for those who fall under low-to-moderate income category. These programs allow people to continue living a more comfortable life in their homes. During the last fiscal year, 46 households were assisted with minor home repairs to allow them to continue living in their homes independently, safely, and comfortably. And now we're going to go to two projects that were funded with CDBG CV dollars. Now, these are dollars that we received during the beginning of the pandemic. The Boys and Girls Club Outdoor Court, with the help of CDBG CV funding, an outdoor court was installed, which will allow the agency to offer outdoor activities such as basketball, foursquare, volleyball, pickleball, tennis, soccer, and more. Creating a court outdoors will encourage and allow for social distancing during the pandemic, where better air circulation will be available versus playing indoors. It will also allow youth to get some exercise, which may improve their physical, mental, and emotional health, particularly during stressful times such as we saw during COVID-19. And then we have the Wi-Fi project, which is underway. In collaboration with the city's Information Technology Division, the project will provide broadband accessibility in neighborhoods that are 51% or more low-to-moderate income. These three areas include the Veterans Memorial Park area, Rogan Park, and Presker Park. Using CDBG CV for broadband accessibility will help prevent, prepare, and respond to the coronavirus in the following ways. It will help people social distance by using the internet to communicate rather than face-to-face. It will allow students to distance learn rather than attend in-person class, and it will accommodate those who need to see a doctor virtually. It will also enable individuals to access work sites or, and/or telework. These are just some of the ways that CDBG CV funding will help low-to-moderate income neighborhoods during the pandemic and future emergencies that will require residents to utilize the internet. So now moving on to our home funding. For 33 years since 1990, the Home Investment Partnership Program has helped communities provide access to affordable housing for low-income households. The city has participated in the home program as part of the consortium with the county of Santa Barbara since the consortium's inception in 1995. The average annual allocation is about $300,000, and home is also administered by HUD. The city's Tenant-Based Rental Assistance Program, also known as TBRA, provides security deposit assistance through a qualified referring agency to qualified low-income households that provide grants for up to $100% or $2,500 max of the required security deposit to low-income families to assist with the overwhelming obstacles to obtain housing. Eligible participants are individuals whose income is 60% or below the area median income. And during 2021-22, so the previous fiscal year, the city of Santa Maria assisted 52 households through the TBRA program. And approximately eight of those households were classified as homeless. Since 2010, more than 1,100 households have been assisted with our TBRA program. It's the only one of its kind in the entire county. Throughout the years, home funds have also been used to assist with the development of affordable housing. Funds have been provided to a variety of agencies, including People Self-Help Housing with the Sierra Madre cottages, the Housing Authorities of Santa Barbara's residences on Depot Street, and Good Samaritan Shelter. In January 2022, Good Samaritan Shelter's Pine Street Bungalow 2 was completed and is currently housing a low-income family formally living at the emergency shelter. It was built behind the Affordable Housing Complex Pine Street Bungalow 1, which was provided to Good Samaritan Shelter by the city of Santa Maria back in 2014. The city acquired the property over a decade ago through the state-funded Neighborhood Stabilization Program. The duplex and the four-bedroom unit will continue operating as permanent affordable housing for decades to come. And last but not least, we have our PLHA funding. For nearly three years, the city of Santa Maria joined a consortium made up of the county of Santa Barbara and the city of Galita to obtain State of California Department of Housing and Community Development under the SB2 PLHA Fund Plan. Say that 10 times fast. The city has received, on average, over $1 million annually from this grant. The funds can be used for housing-related projects and programs that assist in addressing the unmet housing needs in the area. Part of the city's funds have been used to provide $5,000 in closing costs to qualifying low-to-moderate income homebuyers. A little bit more about that. Last year, the city of Santa Maria and the county of Santa Barbara teamed up with the Housing Trust Fund of Santa Barbara County to offer a workforce homebuyer down payment assistance loan program. This down payment assistance program helps low, helps local low-income households purchase their first home in Santa Barbara County. The program provides a 30-year deferred down payment loan of 20% of the home purchase price, up to $100,000 per qualified homebuyer. Santa Maria, in collaboration with Santa Barbara County, assisted the Housing Trust Fund by using its PLHA funds to provide additional funding for closing costs of up to $5,000 for eligible workforce borrowers who purchased their home within the county. Out of 14 loans given in 2022, nine of them were home purchases in Santa Maria. Local PLHA dollars have also been used to augment supportive services at two affordable housing properties developed by the Housing Authority of the county of Santa Barbara. That includes residences at Depot Street and West Cock, Cock cottages. And Good Samaritan is the funded provider. And that concludes my presentation. Thank you so much. Any questions?
Thank you, Ms. Rojo. Any questions from the dais?
Nope.
Thank you.
Thank you.
We had all the answers. Thank you. It's, it's amazing. You just forget all the things that we've done over the years.
Yeah.
But thank you for reminding us.
Yeah, it's pretty remarkable. Thank you for the support.
Let's see, we're going to, okay, I'm going to move item eight back and take up item nine for regular business as Ms. Aguilar has a conflict. So, Madam Clerk, can you read item number nine?
The city council will receive an update on the status of interpretation services for the city council meetings and continue to follow city council policy direction from the June 21, 2022 city council meeting.
Thank you. The staff report is to be made by Assistant City Manager, Mr. Hackelman.
Good evening, Madam Mayor and the council members. Thanks for the opportunity to brief you on this, this evening. So the subject of this presentation is an update on the interpretation services directed by city council June 21, 2022. And it was the result of a, a policy discussion the council had related to interpretation services. And our recommendation is to receive and file this update from staff on the status of interpretation services for city council meetings and to continue to follow city council policy direction from that same June 21 meeting, 2022. So a little bit of background. On June 21, 2022, the city council considered the budget recommendation by staff. One item that was deliberated by a city council was the need, the ongoing need for interpretation services for Spanish-language speakers in the city of Santa Maria. And the nature of the deliberation was about weighing the cost and the required capacity needed for services to be provided. And the interpretation services include, included a real-time meeting interpretation and translation of meeting recordings. And just to make, you know, remind folks of what was discussed and what was directed by the council. It was to continue providing interpretation upon request at city council meetings, to initiate the use of Spanish captions on post-meeting YouTube videos, and to conduct outreach with local Spanish radio stations. So there were a few components of that. And the, the reason that we're back here today is because the city council requested an update on the implementation of these services within eight months. And so here we are in February. Since the adoption of the budget and the associated policy direction from the city council, the staff has acted to implement. And, and so a lot of what the staff has done was to go back to what we were doing pre-COVID, but also to enhance other aspects of the interpretation services that the city provides for Spanish-speaking residents. Concerning the interpretation services provided upon request for the live meetings here, here in this room, the, the staff established a roster of Spanish-speaking qualified interpreters within the city, which is something that the city has historically done. And so that's what we have today with Mrs. Villarana. And so we have had the staff members present at the meetings. And this effort is coordinated by our city clerk's office. And the interpreters are here, standing by should the need arise. But we have also messaged to, to the community, which I'll talk about briefly in just a minute or two, that these services are available and they can be requested in advance as well. And so, but to cover the eventuality that there may be an individual from our community that comes in that, that did not decide to call in, that service is available on demand here in the room, real time. So since, and by way of update, just to give you a status on what's been happening with the demand for services in the intervening months here, we've had four requests for services. And on two occasions, those requests were actually fulfilled or demanded here in council chambers. And they were for one item on each of those respective city council meeting dates. And, and the item was for the social host ordinance. So as I mentioned earlier, you know, this is reflective of what the city has done prior to COVID. So it's been a handful of years now. But it, it serves to allow staff and council to kind of understand the demand that exists for interpretation services and to ensure that we're able to capture demand or, or residents who, who require interpretation services that, you know, there isn't a need to plan ahead for those services to be provided. They're already here. On to kind of post-meeting. So all of our meetings are recorded. They're in YouTube. And we're using YouTube services for translation. But we're also providing a lot of manual effort into that as well to ensure that the entire meeting is transcribed and interpreted and available for any residents who, or, or anyone who wishes to watch those videos and see the translation via subtext. We've also done outreach with local Spanish radio stations. Contained within the staff report, there is a barely significant recounting of the efforts that have been undertaken by staff. One of them, on a number of different radio stations. The mayor, Alice Patino, has a pre-recorded announcement that has been sent out that speaks to both an invitation to our Spanish-speaking residents to come to the meetings and kind of also the location and the time of these meetings. And the posting of the agenda. And generally, it's encouraged that all residents who wish to attend the meetings, that, that they do so. And do so either in person or via YouTube. So just a couple of final thoughts. Fiscal considerations are not substantial for this effort. We're enhancing things that the city has already been doing, plus reincorporating things that the city was doing prior to COVID. And the impact to our community on this is not significant in the sense that there's anything that the, our residents need to be concerned about, but rather that this is a net benefit to our Spanish-speaking residents. And, you know, that taking advantage of this service is something that we encourage and hope more residents will take advantage of. This concludes staff's presentation for this item. If you have any questions, I'd be happy to answer them.
Thank you, Mr. Hackelman. Any questions of Mr. Hackelman right now?
Mr. Hackelman, you're, you're saying that we have interpretation at every city council meeting?
Yes, council member.
Okay. And the people can just come to the meeting, request that the person who is here give them the headphones?
That is correct. And at the beginning of each meeting, our city clerk announces the interpreter and the instructions for taking advantage of that service.
Thank you.
Mr. Escobedo?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Just, there is a, a comment that I personally do not agree with, that it was, that having this service has not any, if there is not a, it is not a significant impact on it. I think it, it does have an impact on the community, being able to, to show up to, to a meeting without having, you know, not a lot of people can send an email 24 hours before the city council meeting to request interpretation. More if you work from 8 to 5, which is a good majority of our constituents. So I think it's a, one day to find out 10 minutes before the meeting that there's an item that will, it matters to you. I think being able to just show up and speak about it, I think that's, that's huge. So yeah, just, just want to make that clarification and that comment. Thank you.
Thank you.
Well, I think that was concerning a fiscal impact. And that's just the fiscal impact, so there isn't any fiscal impact. Madam Clerk, do we have anyone, any correspondence or anyone that requests to speak?
There were no written communications, and I do not have any requests to speak at this time.
Thank you. So I'll, we've got the report, and we'll receive it and file. Thank you, Mr. Hackelman. Okay, so now we'll go back to 8A.
Madam Mayor, can I ask for a couple moments break? We're having some sound issues through our Zoom. And maybe we can address Councilmember Aguilar Hernandez's recusal and then maybe take a couple moments.
Sure, so we'll, we'll address that right now, and then we can take a couple moments. Sounds good. Okay. So do you want to read 8A?
Yes, Madam Mayor. The city council will consider a recommendation of the Planning Commission to review a general plan land use map amendment from a community commercial and light industrial to 68 net acres high-density residential and 11.16 net acres of community commercial, and a zoning map amendment from planned development general commercial and planned development light manufacturing to 68 net acres planned development high densidence, high-density residential and 11.16 net acres planned development general commercial.
Okay, and?
I need to recuse myself because the applicant is a client of the firm.
Okay, thank you. And then you may leave.
Thank you.
Thank you.
You'll be dismissed. And then we'll take, you want a couple of minutes? How much time do you need?
If you could give me like three minutes, that would be great.
Three minutes? Okay, I'll even give you four.
Thank you.
Okay, we're about to speak on Betarravia Plaza and Benaravia Place at the corner of Southwest, excuse me, South Blosser Road and Dan Blau Drive.
Do you think, Madam Mayor, members of the city council, whether the presentation on Betarravia Plaza is on the front page of the study?
The list of recommendations that pretty much takes up the entire page. So I'm going to try to summarize the proposal here. There, of the five recommendations, there's a recommendation for a general plan amendment, a corresponding zone change, an action on the environmental, the addendum to the EIR, and two recommendations for the proposed apartments, their two planned development permits. So the project site is Betarravia Plaza. You may be aware, this is a, the location is north of Betarravia and east of Blosser. Dan Blau Drive runs through the property east-west, and Western runs through the property north-south. Again, there's a general plan zone change component to this, and then there's the apartment component to this. A little bit of history, I think over time, this property has shifted from more of an industrial planning to something that's now more commercial and residential. So this property was annexed in 1982, and in 1994, the properties to the north were annexed. In 2010, this shifted from this industrial designation to a business park designation, and then from 2010 to 2016, that was further refined and modified from a business park into a mix of uses, a mix of uses that includes high-density residential, offices, and commercial. So the plan that's on the slide, that's the latest, that's the 2016 plan, and going from north to south, you have residential to the north, offices in the middle, and then commercial towards Betarravia. So that was, that's the 2016 plan. Here is the track map showing the different lots, and so there are existing R3 high-density lots, that's in the orange, and that's to the north of the Betarravia Plaza site. There are several commercial lots, that's in the red. You have several lots facing Betarravia, and then you have one lot that faces out onto Blosser. And then you have the office, office lots, that's in between the residential and the commercial, in some ways, a buffer between the two uses. Then there are the existing uses. I'll call out the city police station, that's in the PF, that's public facilities, and the existing uses right on the corner within the M1, and that's in the industrial. There's a CHC, a community health centers office, that's located, that's existing. And then there's right on the corner, some office spaces, it used to be a bank administrative office spaces, that's adjacent to the police station. So here's what's being proposed. There's a general, the general plan amendment and zone change is for some of the light industrial to be converted into commercial. That's a property on the corner where you have CHC and the former bank offices. That's because the proposed zone would match the existing uses, the uses of CHC offices, that's more in keeping with the C2 commercial. Then there's an expansion of the residential designation to the west and a little bit to the south, and I'll pull up a map that shows the extent of the zone changes for the residential. And in conjunction with this request, we have the planned development permits for Betarravia Place 1 and 2. Here are two side-by-side maps. So if you look at what's on the left, what's on the left is existing, and what's on the right is proposed. So on the left, you have the M1 that's right on the corner where CHC is at, and where the offices are at, that's proposed to become C2. To the north of CHC, you can see an existing C2 where Carmen and Blosser is at, that's proposed to be high-density residential, which would accommodate the apartment project that we're going to talk about in just a few minutes. And then there's also a lot that is on the eastern part of Betarravia Plaza, that's also been considered for a residential. I'll note that there is, if you've driven by, there's current construction, there's grading, there are some streets that are already built, and you'll see more public improvements be completed in the near future. There's a traffic signal at Betarravia and Western that will be completed in the near future. There will also be the completion of Dan Blau Drive that connects from Western to Blosser that will be completed in the near future. We do have one other proposal that's in review, that's on the corner, it's that corner facing Betarravia that's to the east. There's a proposed gas station and some other service uses in conjunction with the gas. So that's in planning review, that will go to planning commission sometime in the future. So this is, this is the zone change, it's the conversion of the industrial to commercial, but also the conversion of commercial to high-density residential. So about the apartments, there's what we call Betarravia Place 1, and this is bounded by Dan Blau Drive, Walker, and Western. This is on the eastern portion of the overall site. There's some open space to the north, that's adjacent to Carmen, that's proposed to be a dog part that the developer has agreed to help build. This is a site plan for Betarravia Place 1. And for this part of the apartment project, we have 340 market rate apartments at 22 units per acre. They're primarily one- and two-bedroom apartments from 680 to 1,100 square feet, with some three-bedroom apartments. There will be amenities, including clubhouse, community pool, parklets, and private patios. There will be 356 single-car garages, and also open parking spaces for a total of 680 parking spaces. So this will be two parking spaces for each apartment unit. And there will be onsite landscaping that's proposed as well. This is the proposed architecture. They have different buildings of different sizes, this is what they call their templex. And so the templex is three stories tall, there are garages on the ground floor, it's a mission style. There is a design board that's right in front of me here, if you're interested in the details, the earth tone colors, tile roofing, that's what's being proposed at Betarravia Place 1. This is the templex, this is the 20plex, so there's 20 apartment units in this building, it's a larger building, but same idea, three stories, mission style, ground floor garages. Here's a three-dimensional drawing, a perspective drawing, for the proposed 20plex apartment There's also smaller buildings as part of the overall complex, and this is what they call their duplex carriage house, and it accommodates a couple of units with ground floor garages. There was a request before the planning commission to exceed the maximum height, that the pitch of the roof does exceed the 35-foot maximum building height. This is due to the need to accommodate for three stories, and it's pretty difficult to achieve three stories under the 35-foot maximum. There was also some minor modifications to the onsite landscaping, but I think due to the dog part that's being proposed, there's a lot of open space to the north. Staff and the commission, we were willing to work with them on meeting the required open space requirements. Overall, if you include the landscaping and trails to the north along Carmen, including the dog part, there is sufficient park space and open space to serve the project. This is Betarravia Place 2, this is on the west side of Western, and this is a lower-density apartment project compared to the one that was just shown with the templex and 20plex. These are more like townhouses. Here's a site plan showing the layout of the apartment units. So these are two stories with ground floor garages, and so this building, they call it a fourplex, there are four apartments to this building, same architectural style, this mission-style architecture. Another one of these fourplex drawings. And here's a fiveplex, a similar architecture, earth tone, pink colors. And here are some perspectives drawings of the recreation building and of one of the townhouse buildings. So there's already an EIR for this, the city completed an addendum. An addendum is just kind of a minor addition to the EIR, and there are no new significant environmental impacts, and the mitigation measures are less than significant and with no modifications necessary. A traffic study was completed, and no modifications were deemed necessary. So here's the long list of recommendations, but I'm not going to read the whole thing. The first recommendation is for the addendum to the EIR, the second is for the general plan amendment, the third for the zone change. The zone change requires a second reading, so this will say introduce the first reading for the zone change. And then number four and number five are for the planned development permits for Betarravia Place 1 and Betarravia Place 2. This concludes staff's presentation. The applicant is also here. I'll note that I failed to mention that there are three applicants. There's MBK Rental Living, that's the applicant for the apartments, but also the property owners that includes CHC and Bradley Land. So in total, there are three applicants. There are two applicants that's more for the zone change part of this proposal, and MBK is the applicant primarily for the apartments. Again, this concludes staff's presentation. Welcome, any questions you may have?
Are there any questions from the council? Ms. Soto?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. My question is pertaining to traffic along the elementary school there on Jimenez, and going out towards, that's Carmen Lane, Carmen Lane Western and going on to Blosser.
Madam Mayor and Councilmember Soto, so there was a traffic study that was done that included the anticipated growth for Betarravia Plaza, and there were mitigations measures that were included for the project, and so improvements such as traffic signals are all intended to help manage the future congestion that could occur.
Has there been conversations with school district officials to notify them about this development? I mean, I know it's been zoned for this type of mixed-use development, but I'm just curious if they've been updated.
I can't speak to that, but, you know, if I, I can defer to staff, I do have Carol Zizanhanian, she's the project manager for this project.
Good evening.
Good evening. So I'm supposed to be senior planner with the community development department. In early consultation for the addendum for the environment review, we did reach out to Michael Grogan with the Tenneria Bonita School District, and so he was involved in the early stages of the process.
Thank you.
Usually, he's, I mean, he was missing tonight. Usually, he's sitting in here, so I know he's always on it and involved when we have these projects. Thank you. Ms. Escobedo?
Yeah, following that, has there been conversations with the neighbors on that side?
Yes, so there was a notification sent out to all residences within, or sorry, property owners within 300 feet of the project boundary, so that would have included any property owners to the north.
Thank you.
Mike?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. You said that there's been conversations. I'd kind of like to know a little bit more about the details of those conversations, particularly regarding the traffic that Councilwoman Soto mentioned. It just seems like with the buildings around the police department, for one, I mean, sometimes, I got a little experience there, and they might need to get out of that building in a hurry. And having that many vehicles, I'm very, very concerned about traffic. I'd like to know what the end result was of some of those studies to, as to how it's going to influence the other traffic flow that's already in the area.
Who wants, do you want to hear from the applicant yet, or would you like to serve the plan?
I don't care who tells me, I just want to know.
You can respond to that, that'd be fine.
Yeah, I'll go ahead. Madam Mayor, Councilman Cordero, so there is an improvement to, there will be a new connection from the police station out onto Western that would provide a new access point beyond what they have today. And so, but as this gets constructed, I think we'll continue to monitor the traffic levels and continue to work with PD on ensuring a sufficient and efficient access. And I look to Chief Snyder and to see if he has any additional comments or concerns regarding the ability to exit the police station.
Chief Snyder?
I think as he opens up onto Western, I think that's going to be a significant improvement. Right now, obviously, if you go down Blosser, depending on the time of day, it's really congested. If you go down there at, you know, 5:15, it's a slow go. And then right now, we go down to Betarravia, we have to go down to, I think it's Thornburg that we have to connect to, and that's not very thorough. So I think when we open up, when we can leave the PD exit to the right and hit Western, that'll be very beneficial. It's like when we opened up College, before that was open, we just had Miller. And so it's hard to say, as it builds out, you kind of get to see a better idea of what that traffic flow is, but just knowing that they're going to open that up, I think, eases my mind as far as PD traffic, at least.
And the opening to the traffic would be through to Western, Blosser, and then Betarravia, and then the Dan Blau Road, all of?
Yeah. Director Fugone, would you like to speak to it?
Madam Mayor?
Yes.
I'm sorry, I neglected to tell you that I spoke with Lori Tamora and the developers.
Oh, I'm sorry, I should have asked that. Okay, you had an ex parte also?
Yeah, likewise.
Yeah, I did.
I didn't, but I live in that neighborhood.
Okay, okay.
Just real quickly, good evening, Brett Fugone, Public Works Director. Just wanted to touch on some of the access improvements that are going to be, that were part of the overall development Zimmerman Project, Betarravia Plaza. So Western will actually be a full-access signalized intersection, and that's part of the project. So when currently, there's somewhat limited access to the police department, as part of the overall development, Western will go all the way through, and that signal should be, that will be added. And then police department will be able to use that leg and then go all the way out and have full access to Betarravia, whereas they currently don't have that. And then also, there was improvements made to Blosser to provide And then also, there was improvements made to Blosser to provide police access across, full access across Blosser. And then Dan Blau Drive is aligned in such a way. It'll be a full-width roadway straight through. And then police can also go north through there and have full access onto Blosser. So all in all, we're looking at a much better situation for police access, at least in terms from our engineering department.
Yeah, that's what I see now. Ms. Escobedo?
It was mentioned about utilizing the Western Avenue, kind of like also is that way to exit the fire department. Is that, is that right? I don't know if somebody mentioned it. Just want to make sure that I get it right.
Is that for the police department to be able to exit? Yes, that's my understanding, is that when we exit on the north side of the police department, we'll be able to go eastbound and go to Western and go north or south? Is that correct, Brett?
I just want to get it right.
Say that one more time.
So when you exit the north end of the police department, you could go eastbound towards Western?
Yes.
And then from that point, you can either go north or south on Western?
Correct.
Gotcha. Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
Because, oh, sorry.
Go ahead.
Yeah, just because, so Western Avenue, I mean, we have, you know, Jimenez. We have also Quist Apache Park there. So, and I'm a little bit concerned about increasing the traffic on these streets that is like as of today, there's, and I do have some relatives and people that reach out to me in that, from that area that are concerned about the height, the increase of traffic on Western Avenue.
Thank you. Is the applicant here and would they like to make any comments? Good evening.
Good evening, Madam Mayor and members of the council. I'm Ben Ortega with MBK Real Estate Group. I wanted to thank staff for working with us over the last six, seven, eight months. Alex, particularly in the public parks department, in our gift to the city of future 33,000-square-foot community dog park just north of the site. You can see it there on the screen, that upper green triangular-shaped parcel. This will be our second project we're developing in the city of Santa Maria. We'll be developing 340 garden apartments on the right, 103 townhomes on the left, for a total of 443 units, plus another 318 that we've already developed recently behind Costco, for a total of 761 units in the city of Santa Maria. We believe in the city. We want to be here. We want to be long-term. So we think it's appropriate that we give something back to the community, that being the community dog park north of our site, not only for our residents to enjoy, but the neighbors to the north to basically mingle and get to know one another. In terms of our project, we support staff's conditions of approval. I sent a little, simple little letter out to the members of the council a couple of days ago, and we got the final staff report. We are planning to make intersection improvements, as you heard from staff. One of the conditions is to require any traffic signal north of us up at Sonia and Blosser, which we just, you know, are satisfied with. And we just asked that at some point in time, when this gets considered for AB 1600 funding, that that also be considered on the list, and we look forward to working with staff in the near future as that gets back before the city council later this year. Other than that, happy to be here, happy to be developing another project in the city. Our meeting and exceeding code in terms of parking, we have an excess of 34 spaces. On average, two units per space, and this is an upgraded community. We are not doing carports, which we did in our first space out in Azure. These will be fully enclosed garages. So we are trying to continue to improve housing stock here in the city for members of the community. Really, that's it. Just here to answer any questions and thank staff for their support, as well as members of my team, who also are here this evening, including Lori's team and our landscape architect.
Any questions from the council for Mr. Ortega?
Yes.
Yes.
Sir, the dog park gift, that would be Lot 22?
Yes, no, it's north of Lot 22, I guess. Lot 22 is the slope between, see, that's a little arrow. You see a little arrow pointing to that green dashed line? That's what Lot 22 is. That's actually the slope between the city-owned parcel and our Lot Number 3. The dog park is where it says P O, what is that, OS? Oh, my glasses fading me here. Open space, that's the dog park up in that. We do have a, it's a little quick slide if the city clerk would like to show back and show to you.
Before you do that, isn't that already ours? Why, you're giving us our own gift? That property belongs to us, right?
Yes, we're, it's your land, and we're offering to improve it. It's your property, we're offering, and Mr. Passata is here to answer.
Okay, well, the way it was presented, I was, I assumed that you were giving the land to us.
No, it's, we're giving the improvement, not the land, yeah.
That's quite a bit different than?
Yeah, yes, sir. No, you own the land. We're just offering to landscape it, put sidewalks, put trees, put some benches, so that it becomes something other than what's out there today, which is vacant.
Isn't there something there, didn't the local group develop something there in that area?
Leadership.
Leadership Santa Maria?
It's, it's a, it's?
A walking trail or something?
It's a, it's a walking trail.
But not a very good one, is that what you're saying?
It's, it's a, it's a walking trail that can definitely be improved. But it's great. I'm really grateful for the work that was done.
Okay, it's a little different than I was thinking, that you were giving us this PD OS land, but you're not. You're giving the improvements to the land.
Yes, sir.
Yes. Any other questions, Mr. Ortega?
Yeah.
Ms. Soto?
Thank you. My question, I think that this is more fitted to city staff, and it's pertaining to public safety. I know that we talked about PD being able to move efficiently through this new development, but what impact will this have with our, with firefighters? And, you know, call time, I know that the nearest fire station for this parcel in this community is Fire Station 2 on Carmen Lane. And so, just any, I would like to know some, what impacts this development would have on that fire station?
Well, Chung can talk about the specific impacts on this development. The future plan is to have the fire station move further west, so it's not impacted by the train tracks and would be able to more quickly respond to this site. But in the interim, I think Chung might be able to provide some information.
Yeah, Madam Mayor, Councilmember Soto, there's a need for additional services, for fire protection on the west side of the city. And there are some conversations that are being had regarding another proposed development that could address that issue. This has been being planned for a while. And so I think we always plan to make sure that there are sufficient public services to address the needs. I think for this project, it's ensuring that there's adequate access to, so that fire engines can get to the future residences in an efficient manner. And so looking at the overall layout and street design and propose traffic signal improvements. We believe this has been reviewed by fire prevention, and this particular layout should meet that. But also, when subsequent building plans are submitted, there will be additional review for, to ensure good access to the structures.
Okay, thank you. And then, Madam Mayor, may I?
Go ahead.
Thank you. My last question, and I believe that this question is more fitted to the developer, if I may. My question is, in terms of the workforce that you foresee coming, or the opportunities for employment that this project may have in our community?
In terms of staffing?
Yeah, like construction, the actual development of this project? Like the building, the construction of the development?
We will probably have about 300 to 400 temporary jobs to build the project. And upon completion of the project, probably operate of a staff of about 12. You know, between, it's one project, it's two phases, kind of east and west. So we'll be having one leasing office on the right side, and the property on the left is a townhouse, but it'll all be still for rent, but it'll be managed and operated out of the property on the right.
I get, maybe I can phrase my question in a different way. But my, what I'm trying to ask is, who will be building this development? Like?
We will. Our company will. We'll be hiring a local general contractor.
A general contractor?
Yes.
Okay.
We'll be the owner, developer, and manager once the community is built. And we'll be hiring a local general contractor to oversee the construction of all trades.
Right. And I'm assuming that this general contractor would be hiring a workforce that, where they're being paid prevailing wage and all of that, right?
Yeah, we would. Well, we haven't selected the general contractor. So we would be, you know, once the project gets approved, then we go into design, and then we review the project through the city building department. Once it clears the building department, which will probably be from today, probably about six months from now, then we would go out and start soliciting proposals from general contractors. So no decision's been made yet, the general contractor.
And then my last question is, what is the timeframe?
To build or construction? Probably about 18 to 24 months, yeah.
Fast, okay.
Yeah, yeah, hopefully sooner, but, depending on weather.
Ms. Escobedo?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Are the, is there going to be any affordable units in the complex?
No, sir.
Have you considered adding affordable units?
On this, not on this project, no, sir.
Thank you.
Yeah.
Ms. Cordero?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Councilwoman Soto brings up a very good point with regard to the fire department. I know that it's the closest one, as the crow flies, but it's pretty far away, because in order to get to this facility, they have to go either out onto Broadway, over to Better Avia, down Better Avia to Blosser, and then north on Blosser, or, so it's not as close as we might think. The fire department is quite a ways away. There's a lot of traveling that has to happen. So Mr. Chung spoke to the fact that they're looking at maybe something on slightly west of Blosser that might better serve this area. But in the meantime, it's going to be, service is going to be difficult for us. As far as emergencies, fire emergencies, or fire, the services of the fire department, right? Oh, you just cut back. I mean, it's going to be kind of, emergency services, of course, the police department's right next door, but the fire services is going to have to travel quite a ways in order to get there. I'm uncomfortable with so many units going in there and emergency services being somewhat restricted to get in there if they need help. That's, I'm trying to deal with that for you, for us. And that's a lot of people you're putting in there in a relatively small space. The traffic, the ingress and egress of the traffic, potential for needed services, emergency services. I'm a little concerned, more so than I was when I spoke a couple of weeks ago at Lori's office.
Well, I think right now, our plan is to move that fire station, so.
Well, it's a plan.
Ms. Stillwell?
Yeah, to clarify my earlier comment, so the standard of cover, this development here does meet our standard of cover requirements from the current Station 2. You're correct that they won't be able to go just directly west on Carmen. They would have to go south and probably to one of the new streets that'll connect to Better Avia to enter this project. And so the current project will still meet our standards. And by moving the fire station further to the west, it'll still meet the standards and then allow us to meet additional standards further to the west, where you are correct. With that routing we have to do, it slows the response time further west of this parcel. But this one in particular will still be able to meet the standard, or will still be able to meet the standard to get to this parcel.
Ms. Tamara?
Thank you very much, Mr. Stillwell, in responding to that, because this is one of the pieces that has been planned for. They are required to pay their fire department fees as part of this, and they'll contribute towards the construction of the new fire station, most likely just north of this area. And so the whole Blosser Southeast, Blosser Southwest neighborhoods, all of those would be served by a fire station probably near La Brea. And that will help provide substantial service to this area. The other thing that has happened with development, and I'm sure the fire department could respond to this, is the new building codes require that all of the buildings are sprinkled, and there's additional fire safety mechanisms within each one of the buildings. And so the newer buildings have a, I'm going to say a reduced response need because of the way the building construction is required now through the building codes, and the building codes have just been updated again. So, you know, there is obviously all of the medical responses and all of the other elements that would be fire department responsibilities, but the actual fire in regards to buildings that are being constructed now has been reduced. And so I hope that you'll take that into consideration on this project.
Ms. Escobedo?
Yeah, and I was looking, I was looking, trying to see the Santa Maria Fire Department just posed a report about the requests and all the services they've been providing. And actually, fire is not on the top. It's more in regards, paramedic, more health. And so that's, I do share Councilmember Cordero's concern about it. So, just want to share that.
Soto, did you have another question?
Now I'm getting into the technicalities of the actual buildings and structures. But will this be gated? Will these developments be gated? No.
No. One of the goals of the city has been to keep open communities, so this will not be gated or fenced. It'll be accessible to the public.
And there'll be like that similar walkway that's throughout?
Yeah, if you look on the aerial, on the computer screen right there, that green dashed line also mimics a public trail, okay? That public trail will wrap around both projects, east and west, literally following that green dashed, okay? And then run all the way down the side of the railroad tracks, all the way down to Better Avia. And then the streets and the community itself is not gated, nor is it fenced.
And, thank you. My, going back to the roadway and the street, so something that I hear a lot of complaints about in this particular neighborhood is just this high speed of vehicles, or like vehicles just drive really fast down Sonia, Western, Carmen, going towards Blosser, just high-speed vehicles, and it's worrisome because there's a park there, there is a school there. And so I know that there's already been like traffic studies conducted, and thank you for like wanting or agreeing to build that traffic light at the end of Sonia. But I'm wondering if there's anything else that we can do to lower the speed or encourage people to drive slower in these neighborhoods? Especially if there's going to be trails that connect to the smaller streets and neighborhoods. We just need to make sure that folks are safe when they're walking around, especially if they're going to be walking to these commercial areas, you know, maybe there's a coffee shop, you know?
Well, Mr. Ortega, if you can figure out some way we can get our Santa Mia drivers to slow down, we would certainly appreciate it. It's, I mean, you know, I live on a street where, just this morning, I pulled into my driveway in my garage, and two cars are speeding down. And it's all over. It's terrible.
I'll get right, I'll get right on it.
Yeah. Thank you. Thank you.
I mean, what I'm seeing is that oftentimes it's just that the roads are built so wide and.
That's right.
Like, speed bumps may help or stop signs may help, I mean, just.
Fire department doesn't want speed bumps.
Oh, he don't.
I know that. Cause I used, I used to, I used to make that suggestion, so I, I've learned that one. So, um, Madam Clerk, I'd like to open up the public hearing. Do we have any requests to speak or any written correspondence?
Uh, so far we have no requests to speak and the only written communication that we have is the one that mentioned by um Mr. Ortega.
Okay.
That we sent earlier. Um, but no, we have no.
Ms. Teller.
Yes, uh, thank you very much, Madam Mayor. Just to respond to the point that uh Ms. Ing made is that there are several applicants on this, Bradley Lance and CHC are awful, also applicants and uh they are very much in support of this project. Uh, they've spent quite a bit of time working with Steve Zimmerman to straighten out and finally construct Dan Blough Drive and make the frontage improvements along there to the benefit of not only this project but for the police department. And uh they're looking forward to uh making this transition from an industrially designated property to commercial.
Thank you.
Thank you very much.
I don't mean to be flippant about our drivers, but maybe when we, we hire all of our extra police officers, we can, we can give a quota to fill every month or something so we can get a lot of speeding tickets. I, I have people complaining to me that we're not giving enough speeding tickets, so there you go.
Thank you.
No, I, I am, I am making the suggestion, that's it.
You can have a priority.
Yes, I shouldn't, yeah, a priority.
I don't think there's a quota, I think the new rule is we can write as many as we want.
That, that can be the quota.
You can, you can make that as a request. Okay. I'll close the public hearing now and bring this back, item back to the council. Any further discussion and/or a motion?
Madam Mayor?
Yes.
To make it easy, you may move the recommendations of staff, just if you don't want to read all five of those items.
Madam Mayor. I'd like to make a motion approving the recommendations presented by staff.
Thank you. Is there a second? Well, I'll, I'll second it. Just, any dis, further discussion?
I, Madam Mayor, I just want to say that I, I reiterate my concerns about the traffic and specifically the traffic uh from the police department that, that may have to find themselves operating at, at a higher speed than what normally we would. Uh, there's a school there, it's a residential district, and until you power a police car through a residential district where schools are, uh, you've got something to learn. And, and that's going to be difficult and, and taxing on our, our employees and uh I'm concerned about that.
Well, I, I think we would all be concerned about that, Mr. Cordero, and I'll tell you right now, and I, I've been to so many meetings on housing, and if we don't take this opportunity to build some good housing, the state is gonna come out and do it. SB thirty-five, you can see that. So, you know, take your pick, what, what you'd like, but I, I think this uh is a well-planned development, it's something that we need on that side of town.
Mr. Escobedo.
Hello, Madam Mayor. Uh, thank you. I, I do share the concern on the police, but also the fire uh services. Uh, I got the numbers, so the, the fire department uh last year took care of uh four hundred and sixty calls related to fire and six thousand nine hundred and eighty-three for EMS-related assistance, so I, I just see that and it's just the traffic plus the time, uh, the time that those services will be uh taking care of their future residents of this area, just, I do, I do share the, do not feel comfortable with that. And the lack of affordable housing, which uh we need the most here in Santa Maria, those uh, I think it's uh the part that I'm not a, feel very particularly comfortable uh with the project, so.
Madam Mayor, may I make a comment?
Yes, Soto.
Um, I understand the, the, the concern for affordable housing and mind you, I'm, I'm a huge advocate for building affordable housing. However, there is an affordable housing unit that's currently under construction in the same vicinity. Um, I, I don't know how many, I, I can't remember the number of, of apartment units off the top of my head, but it's, it's, it's that last vacant, or that vacant piece of land or used to be vacant piece of land on the corner, I think of, of, is it Depot? Um, and so, I mean, there, there is significant affordable housing coming in into this neighborhood already.
Well, we have a lot of, and, and, and Mr. Ing can speak to this, we have a lot of affordable housing that is being planned, that is going up, but if you look at our Rena numbers, you, you can see that uh it, we need twice as much in the moderate or above moderate, so it's not gonna all be affordable housing. Uh, you know, may, maybe what you like and what is reality are two different things and, and those are the numbers that this community is gonna have to reach, but we have a lot of affordable housing going up in mixed, mixed housing.
I, I definitely, I definitely see that, uh, but that doesn't mean that we need more and our constituents uh request them and.
And that's what I'm saying, I know that, and it's going up there because we have numbers that we need to reach because the state puts this onus on us to do that and that's what we're trying to do. So, we're, go ahead, Ms. Soto.
And, and just for clarification, I mean, this is, we're just, we're just voting on the amendment, amending the, the, the current use of this land, basically, so regardless of, um, yes, I, I agree, Mr. Escobedo, affordable housing is so important and we need to build more of it and we're not building fast enough. However, my understanding is that uh construction essentially has already begun in this, in this, in this property and um what we're seeing before us is just a recommendation to make adjustments to the use of land. Um, so whether we, we, we vote yes or no tonight on, on, on these recommendations, there is a project that's still moving ahead.
Oh, yeah, I mean, definitely, I, I mean, that we got three hundred and forty units already uh on, approved, uh, but we're talking about adding one-third uh extra aside from that, so I think it's more than just an adjustment, it's more, it's uh adding almost one-third of, of what is already uh going on, which will impact the whole, the whole area and the fact that none of that is uh affordable, everything is marked rate, that's the part I do not feel comfortable with adding more units, there are gonna be rental and none of it uh affordable.
Okay, but as Ms. Soto said, that is not what we're, we're, we're working on here tonight. These are rezones. This is all a planned development permits for Bet Arabia Place, these are rezones. And, you know, all, all of our development people can look at the traffic, what is required in density, um, if, if we really, if we wanted to go in and tell the developers how they should do this, that maybe we should, we need to attend the, um, what are they called? Meetings on, on the afternoon?
Madam Mayor, I'm sorry, what was the question?
I'm saying uh the meetings that, oh, the, what are the meetings they have, the, the planning commission has in the afternoon?
Study sessions?
Study sessions. That's where they really get down to the, to the whole meat of the whole thing, is going to study sessions, and I've been to several and they're very, very informative.
And, and, may I, Madam Mayor?
Sure, go ahead.
I think that the last comment that I'll make is that right now the city of Santa Maria is also in prime position to truly partner, to, to partner, not truly, but to partner, in, partner with the county of Santa Barbara and finding city-owned vacant land that we could use for affordable housing in, 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 from that point of like a, a policy and if we want to make headways in, in building and construction, constructing affordable housing, maybe it's a conversation that we have as a city council about like, hey, do, the city of Oxnard has a housing authority department, like, is that something that we would want to see happen here in the city of Santa Maria, where the city of Santa Maria takes the initiative in finding land and constructing affordable housing units rather than being on, on basically waiting for developers to come in and say, hey, we're here and we wanna develop affordable housing. If, if we want to see the development of affordable housing happening here, we need to have the political will as a city council to say, you know what, we have vacant land that's city-owned, let's gift that, let's work with the county and let's build affordable housing units. Or let's have a conversation about like, do we take on affordable housing as a, as a city? Do we construct the affordable housing ourselves? Can we as a city become also the developers of affordable housing? We're not going to solve the issue of affordable housing by waiting for developers to come in and solve it for us. We need to have the political will as a city council to do that and whether we zone this piece of land, whether we move forward with the rezoning of this, it doesn't, it doesn't guarantee that someone's gonna come in and build affordable housing in this vacant piece of land.
You're absolutely right. Okay, so, Mr. Stillwell, where do we go from here? Shall I just call for, I'll just call for the vote. Madam Clerk.
Councilmember Soto?
Aye.
Madam Mayor Patino?
Aye.
Councilmember Escobedo?
No.
Councilmember Cordero?
Okay, passes three to, three to one.
Yes.
I'm, I'm missing somebody here tonight. Okay. I guess that is it.
Thank you very much and I think you'll see a project you'll be really proud of.
Thank you, Mr. Tumora. Thank you, Mr. Ortega.
Thank you, Lori. Your work.
Okay, let's see, being as I switched that around. So next we move on, Mr. Stillwell.
Sure, thank you, Madam Mayor, members of the city council. First, it's my pleasure to announce that Deputy Fire Chief Bradley Dandridge joined the city of Santa Maria's fire department last Monday, January thirtieth. Chief Dandridge, sitting behind me, brings outstanding experience, focus and energy to the position. He comes to the city of Santa Maria with over eighteen years of experience in fire service, holds multiple fire service certificates and a bachelor of science and business administration degree from Cal Poly, and he's a Santa Maria High School graduate, so please join me in welcoming Deputy Fire Chief Dandridge. And, thank you. And the next meeting of the city council is February twenty-first. A few items of note, a proclamation for Women's Day, a proclamation for National Black History Month, the Battles Road Trail Property Acquisition, so the, the Battles Trail Expansion, um, a, they, we're gonna bring back the Resolution of Governance for its biannual review and we'll have the second quarter financial report. And that concludes my report, but I also, I could do the um, the AB one, two, three, four report for Councilmember Aguilar Hernandez if you'd like.
Certainly, go ahead.
So um, her report was that she attended the New Mayors and Councilmember Academy, February first through third, and Universal City, and that also included her required ethics training and harassment training.
Oh, that's right, I did know. Yes, thank you. Okay, Mr. Cordero, shall we start with you?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. On the eighteenth, um, I attended for you, Madam Mayor, the Quarterly Schools Meeting in Orchid, uh, along with Gloria and, and Andrew. Very informative. It seems like um all, all of these players are on the same page about trying to do things that, that are positive for the school district. On the eighteenth, I attended the Forty-Fifth Annual Fire Department Appreciation Dinner at the Elks and it was uh very nice, very well done, the fire department was well represented. It was a great dinner, it was uh, of course, as you know, I'm kind of involved with the Elks and uh it was one of the largest parties they've had since the post-pandemic, so it was uh, it was very nice. And then on the nineteenth, I met with Lori Tamora on this project here out at her office, as I mentioned earlier. On the twentieth, I was in San Jose with, with you and the Chamber and others to see the redevelopment that went on there several years ago, that was the Santana?
Santana Row.
Santana Row. Uh, it was real exciting, a lot of, um, a lot of interesting uh things that, that took place on there, that probably the, well, one of the most interesting things was the, the dialogue that went on when we weren't walking around and uh with some of the other people that were there, with, with Glenn and, and uh others that were, that were present. I, I thought it was very worthwhile going up there, uh, just an outstanding event to, to be part of. On the, on that same day, I had the honor of reading a resolution that you signed, Madam Mayor, for John Moretti at the, at the Elks. His retirement and, a real retirement, I think he's retired about four times and he said he's really gonna do it this time. On the twenty-eighth, I was at the, what they call a re-entry program for uh people, people coming out of, in custody and they are, receive a lot of training, some of them get clothes, some of them get uh experiences on how to do interviews so that they can reintroduce themselves into the society uh after being held in custody for, for, for criminal violations. And the, this was not any, any dialogue with the participants, this was dialogue with the supporting staff and the room was just chock full of people with, that are, that are there to support these uh people coming out of institutions in, in efforts to make them productive citizens and it was very impressive, a group of people. On the twenty-sixth, I was at a Zoom meeting for the affordable housing, um, also a very productive meeting. And on the twenty-sixth, I attended the um, a site visit for Hardy Diagnostic. I, I really would like to spend hours talking about these people and obviously I can't and won't do that, uh, but Hardy Diagnostic, we were out there, uh, again, uh, on, on your behalf, but uh, the Chamber was there, Andrew was there and uh it's a real fascinating facility out there and I just want to say that their, their help, they've got about, they, they start at about nineteen dollars an hour and they go up as high as like thirty-nine dollars an hour. And their annual payroll budget is about sixteen point two million dollars in California. And so that's a significant um amount of money that is coming into our community and, and a good part of it is staying here. They've got two hundred and eighty employees in, in California, most of the employees that they have are in the Santa Maria area. They have another uh facility that does manufacturing out of state, but it's a real dynamic uh facility, very, um, the pandemic was good to them in the sense that they were doing a lot of uh analyzing of things, it's a, it's a real progressive uh, uh, business. I, I had, I had, I knew what a Petri dish was, but I had really never seen one and I had the opportunity to see about thirty or forty thousand of them out there that day and they do some real interesting things, it's just really um impressive. And the gentleman that I met, Mr. Hardy, uh, was uh very um congenial, easy to talk to. One of the things that impressed me the most was when we walked into offices, it, it was him talking to, and he would say, hi Bob, and they'd say, hi Jay, I mean, there was, there was no, I mean, he was just a really nice individual. And uh, that is the it for my reporting, but I do want to comment on the, on our library and the things, all the things that our library does that I don't think many of us know about, many people know about, that the library is such a. many people know about, that the library is such a huge part of our community. And I'm not saying that because she's in the room here. I mean, I, I just see it, they, they come out with all these news articles and, and it's just real impressive to all the different arms of the community that the library somehow touches and is involved with. And I think that is a tribute to just another one of the offices that is run out of the city of Santa Maria. And that's all for me, Madam Mayor.
Thank you. Ms. Escobedo?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. On January 18th, I attended the 45th Annual Fire Protection Appreciation Night. On the 25th, I participated in Point in Time Count, doing outreach to our homeless population. And yesterday, February 6th, I attend the, the meeting put together by the Santa Maria Valley Chamber of Commerce with this California Hispanic Chamber of Commerce at Maya Restaurant.
Thank you. Ms. Soto?
I attended the Quarterly Schools Meeting on January 18th and the Elected Leaders Forum on Friday, February 3rd.
Thank you. January 17th, I did the Ben Hayes Show in the morning prior to our city council meeting. On the 18th of January, I attended the Project Opioid Meeting with Sheriff Brown, did, attended the Hope Village Discussion with the clergy. I asked that they contact each and every one of you to take a tour of Hope Village down in Santa Barbara. I attended the 45th Annual Fire Protection Appreciation Month, put on by the Elks. And I think we should say thank you to the Elks every time we get because they do a lot for our first responders here in Santa Maria, where a lot of places, they just, they don't acknowledge them at all. January 19th, I attended the SB CAG Monthly Meeting, HU, the HUD Stakeholder Briefing, APCD in the afternoon, and the Education Spotlight on the Youth Opioid and Fentanyl Epidemic. On the 20th, I went to San Luis Ape on the site tour for Santana Row, and we had the woman that did the economic development for that. And I thought she was very candid with us and the questions were asked, what pitfalls there were. The thing that impressed me most and that probably didn't impress a lot of people was the parking. They had so much parking and you couldn't see it. And it was just these beautiful buildings and all these beautiful apartments there. And people were living there and walking to the parks and walking to where they were going to eat and walking to the shopping. On the 22nd, I attended the California Alliance of Local Electeds. On the 25th, I attended the Crimes Against Businesses Meetings, and that was mostly about the flock camera and how important the flock camera is in our city. And I did the Marion Foundation Board Retreat, and that evening I attended, again, the Meeting of Dignity Moves, which is the organization that wants to put the small houses in across from the government center. On January 26th, I attended the Land Use Law and Planning Conference for LAFCO and the HCED Policy Committee Meeting. It's really nice when you can go away to a meeting, but you've got your laptops, you can also attend the other meetings that you're supposed to be going to. On the 28th, which is Sunday, Livable California Teleconference. And February 1st, 2nd and 3rd, attended League of Cities, Mayor's, Councilmember Academy. And one of the big things that I, the takeaway there is a lack of local control, that the state keeps handing the mandates and especially on housing without the funding. And that just seems to be resounding by everybody and we're all saying yes. And I even, the people are even getting angry about it and saying, we need the funding, we can't just do the housing. And then I attended the California Alliance of Local Electeds on Sunday, and yesterday also went to the Chamber of Commerce meet and greet at the Maya Restaurant. And ladies and gentlemen, thank you. This is the end of the meeting.